Thank you, we're just gonna begin in one second.
Thank you.
Alright, well I'd like to thank everybody for waiting and call this meeting of the South Orange Board of Trustees to order. Ms. Klein, could you please take the role?
Yes, thank you and good evening everyone. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
She's attending my telephonic conference. Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Here.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
And President Torby?
Here.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Records Act. In addition, this meeting has been posted in Village Hall, on our website, and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken at tonight's meeting.
Thank you, and we, all of us that are here sincerely apologize for everybody having to wait. We did attempt to reach Trustee Gould and Trustee Goldberg by phone, email, text message, home phone, cellphone, to no answer. So we do have Trustee Bauer here on the phone, she does complete the quorum so we can proceed with the meeting. Normally at this time, the way our meetings are structured, we go into executive session first. I'm gonna hold off on that so we can get to the best part of the meeting tonight. The reason why most of you are here, to promote two of our fine police officers. So at this time, I'd just like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. As I mentioned, I want to get to the police promotion ceremony part of the meeting. Right away at this time, I'd like to ask Chief Jim Shalhoub to come up to the podium.
I'm Chief Jim Shalhoub of the South Orange Police Department. I'd like to welcome everybody for coming out. Thanks for putting up with the heat here in the room. I'll get you out as quickly as possible.
Chief, you have to speak directly into the mic.
Okay, very good, thanks. Promotions, very exciting time in the police department, very exciting time for Sergeant Moore and Detective Acevito. I'd just like to say a few words about both of the promoters today. Sergeant Eric Wesley Moore, he was born in Orange, grew up in South Orange, so he's a local person here. Graduated from Columbia High School, made his way through the ranks, he's got 22 years under the department. It's always nice to see a homegrown person make it here, and we're very proud of him. It's a great day here in South Orange. I'd just like to congratulate Sergeant Moore.
and I think we're gonna do them each, one at a time. The first is, the board has to pass a resolution accepting the promotion, then we will do the ceremony. So?
I move.
With that being said?
And I second.
Moving pretty quick. I'll make sure the clerk can get this all on the record. So we do have a motion for Resolution 2013-035?
Oh, 35.
Okay. Just moved by Trustee Levinson, seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. Do you have the role, please?
Thank you, Trustee Bauer?
Janine?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So Resolution 2013-35 has been adopted.
Okay. Sergeant Moore, if you'd like to come up here. I'll enjoy calling you that for the last time.
I, Eric Moore.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith?
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state?
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties?
All the duties.
As a police lieutenant?
As a police lieutenant.
And the Department of Public Safety Police Force for the Township of South Orange Village.
And the Department of Public Safety for the Township.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office?
And I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment?
To grant preferential treatment.
Nor seek personal gain?
Nor seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage not available to the public.
Favor or advantage not available to the public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Not with you.
Sheena, I want my photo. Come on guys, you too.
Yeah, why don't we all go?
Yes.
Yes.
Come on. Hey, listen. My vote earned this photo.
Chief?
Okay. I'm sorry, I just wanted to add that I would be remiss if I didn't thank the elected officials that made it here today. Trustee Bauer, who was here, I guess we Skyped or called in, whatever that is. And Village Administrator Lewis, the clerk, Robin Clark, Klein, and Steve Rother for making this possible. The next promoter is Detective Adrian Acevito. He's got 14 years on the job, he's in patrol. His most recent assignment was in the Detective Bureau. He's been assigned to the Fugitive Task Force, Baylesburg Task Force, most recently SS County Prosecutor's Cyber Task Force as well. He's done a police unity tour, body patrol, that were killed in the line of duty. I'm very happy to promote today Detective Acevito to the rank of sergeant.
Oh yeah. I move.
No, no, I move. You moved last night. I move, nope.
I move.
I second.
Resolution 2013-034, a motion was made by Trustee Rosner and seconded by? Resolution 2013-034, a motion was made by Trustee Rosner and seconded by.
D-D-D-D.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Could we have the roll please?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Thank you. So Resolution 2013-34 has been adopted.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, place your left hand. I state your name.
I, Adrian Acevedo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do further solemnly swear.
And I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
As a police sergeant.
As a police sergeant.
And the Department of Public Safety Police Force for the Township of South Orange Village.
And the Department of Public Safety Police Force for the Township of South Orange Village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office.
And that I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment.
To grant preferential treatment.
Nor seek personal gain.
Nor seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage.
Favor or advantage.
Not available to the public.
Not available to the public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Youngest one's in the front.
I can't see Mark's head. Mark's disappeared. Okay, there we go. Here's Lyle. Say so, Sergeant. Got it.
There's. You are handsome. You are gorgeous. You are beautiful. You're magnificent.
So I figured everybody else's thanks to the rest of the audience.
Before everybody leaves, are there any comments from any of the board members? Any brief comments?
Just a big congratulations.
A big congratulations. I've known Eric for a long time and I'm very happy for him and proud of him. Congratulations to both.
I am just so proud of South Orange doing the right thing by giving opportunities to those individuals that have earned it. And it's so reflective of this incredible community. And there's no other community like South Orange. And I look out into the audience and I see the town. And I think it's a joyous occasion for you to invest some of your personal time to come out and be a witness and to celebrate the achievements of these two officers. So it's a joyous occasion and that's all I have to say. It's good stuff.
So I'll add one last comment. I have the pleasure of knowing both of these gentlemen for a couple of years. And I'll say this with a couple of different hats on. One is a resident of this town. One is an EMT on the Rushi Squad where I think I've been on calls with both of you. And the other is as the village president. I couldn't be happier with being able to do this for you guys. And I couldn't be happier with the police department that we have in this town. Could every police officer here, for a second, maybe just.
Stand.
Raise your hand or. We've got a lot of people here. Sorry, only South Orange police officers. But people look at South Orange, I mean, it's an incredible community, as was said. And not a lot of people understand how hard, how much hard work it takes to make a town like South Orange what it is. And so much of that is our police department and the men and women who work in public safety. They're working when we're sleeping. And I think, again, with each of those three hats, as a resident, as an EMT, as the village president, I could not be happier. And I think I speak for everybody in this community to say congratulations. Now, all of you may not know by coming here, you're now required to stay for the rest of the three-hour meeting. We'll actually, we'll give everybody a couple of minutes to kind of file out before we recess the meeting. So again, congratulations, guys.
Hello.
...that were scheduled for earlier in the meeting, including the New Jersey Transit and Seton Hall presentation, as well as the public comment periods. Okay. It is our practice that before we take any action in this governing body, that we do have a public comment period. I don't want to not do that for this meeting, although I would ask that if you have a comment that is not directly related to the ordinances that we are speaking about and what's on the consent agenda, and there are copies back there. For example, if you have a comment about New Jersey Transit or about anything else that we're not taking action on, I just ask you to wait till the second comment period so we can get through the business and try and get this chaos of a meeting in some sort of order.
Can I suggest that you only take comments on the hearings, on second reading?
Yeah.
And hold all other comments till the end. That way, we don't keep Trustee Bauer on the phone any longer than is necessary.
Okay. So, our first ordinance tonight. It's Klein?
Yes, thank you. This will be an ordinance for second reading and public hearing, Ordinance 2012-24. This is an ordinance of the Township of South Orange Village approving the Valley and Third Streets Redevelopment Plan, which amends and replaces the Central Business District Redevelopment Plan for Block 2304, Lots 3 through 9, and South Orange Development and Zoning ordinances.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor up for anybody to comment on this ordinance in particular, 2012-24. Okay. Seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing for this ordinance and ask if there's any further discussion, comments, or questions from any of the board members.
No.
Now, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. We have the roll, please.
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So, Ordinance 2012-24 has been adopted.
The next two ordinances on first reading.
Thank you. Our first ordinance is 2013-01. This is an ordinance pursuant to NJSA Title 48, Section 17-10, authorizing the issuance -- I'm sorry, authorizing the license of certain premises more particularly described in the attached agreement to Cablevision of Newark.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from any members of the board?
No. No, I just wanted for the public to understand that on first reading, we had just our discussion on these ordinance. So, if we don't have any questions this time, that's because we've discussed our concerns or questions when it was first introduced.
Well, this is the first reading of this ordinance.
Okay.
But, yeah, we generally do have the ordinances for our conference agenda, our work session before this as well. And obviously, the process, then it goes to a second reading where we have a public hearing.
Thank you, President. That's what I meant.
Okay. So, seeing as there are no questions or comments from the board, can I ask for a motion, please?
Move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. Could we have the roll, please?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So, Ordinance 2013-01 has passed on first reading. We have a second ordinance for first reading tonight. This is Ordinance 2013-02. This is an ordinance establishing salary ranges for members of the OPIU Collective Bargaining Unit for the years 2011 through 2013.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from any members of the board? Okay. Could I have a motion, please?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. We have the roll, please.
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So, Ordinance 2013-02 has passed on first reading as well. Thank you.
I move that Ordinance 2013-01 and 2013-02 be set down for second reading and final passage at the February 25th meeting, 2012, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, and that a public hearing be held at that time, and that the village clerk be authorized to take the necessary action regarding public notice of such meeting.
Okay. There was a motion by Trustee Davis Ford, seconded by Trustee Rosner.
2013. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have a series of 18 resolutions tonight on the consent agenda. We have a resolution adopting the cash management plan of the Township of South Orange Village for the year 2013. This item was tabled from the January 14th Board Meeting. Resolution amending the holiday schedule provided in the South Orange Policy and Procedure Manual adopted on April 26, 2010 by Resolution Number 109-10. A resolution appointing representatives to the Community Development Block Grant Program for the year 2013. Resolution approving the request of Kelly Russo-Lay for relocation of an anchor by PSCNG at 588 Longview Road in the public right-of-way. Resolution authorizing the renewal of membership in the Suburban Essex Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. A resolution awarding a contract by competitive bids to J&amp;S Enterprises for soccer training services for the 2013 spring and fall season South Mountain Soccer Programs. A resolution authorizing change order number one for A&amp;J Contractors Group for the Fairview Avenue Reconstruction Project, representing a net increase of $18,351 to the original contract amount. A resolution authorizing change order number one for Beaver Electric Company for the Crest Drive Auxiliary Firehouse Improvements Project, representing a net increase of $4,250 to the original contract amount. A resolution authorizing change order number one for diamond construction for the 2012 curb and sidewalk program, representing a net increase of $11,463.16 to the original contract amount. A resolution endorsing a traffic light at the intersection of Scotland Road and Raymond Avenue. A resolution hiring per diem crossing guards in the South Orange Department of Public Safety Police Force. A resolution hiring part-time staff for the 2013-2014 Winter Recreation Programs in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. A resolution hiring a teacher for the Winter Cultural Arts Educational Programming in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. A resolution reappointing Susan Severance as a Commissioner on the South Orange Park and Authority. A resolution reappointing Atgar -- I'm sorry, Atar Rusman as a Commissioner on the South Orange Park and Authority. A resolution appointing Ross Fields as Commissioner to the South Orange Park and Authority. We have a resolution amending the composition of the Municipal Open Space Recreation and Farmland and Historic Trust Fund Advisory Board as established by Resolution 281-00. And lastly, we have a resolution approving and ratifying a memorandum of agreement with the Office and Professional Employees International Union. That's the OPIU, Local Number 32.
Thank you. Are there --
On 2013-025 about the traffic lights, since a number of people here are here to speak on that, I suggest that we hold off.
Want to pull that out?
From either next meeting, so that people can make their public comments tonight, or after all public comments are made, if she's still on the phone.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll take that resolution out, the consent agenda.
I would like to hold 2013-007, and 2013-017 just as a comment.
So, you have comments, or you want to take them out?
Well, seven I would like to take out.
Okay.
Seventeen I'd just like to comment on.
Okay. Please do so.
Yeah. Barry, can you go over what holidays that we have now changed?
What, the holidays that we've removed?
Correct.
Yeah. Previously, the village was closed and recognized. In addition to President's Day, we recognize Lincoln's Birthday. So, that has now been removed, and the village offices and services will be open and provided. We also previously recognized Columbus Day. We have now -- we will be open and provide service on that day. And we're also used to be closed on General Election Day, whatever it is. It's not always the first Tuesday, but the Tuesday in November, depending on which one it is, but we'll now be open for those days.
Move a little closer, Mike.
We'll now be open for those days as well.
So, we now have three additional days?
Three additional days that will be open to the public and providing services.
Thank you.
Okay. Are those all the questions? Do I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Davis Ford.
But, you have to make sure you exclude --
I want to pull out seven.
The motion is excluding 2013-007 and 2013-025.
Yes.
I second.
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. Sorry. Could we have the roll, please?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So, the consent agenda has been approved. Resolution 2013-007 and 025 have been removed and will be tabled.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to move on to the approval of the bills.
Well, can I make a comment on 007 still has not been properly responded to, and I'm going to keep it tabled.
Okay.
The Board of Trustees have been provided a copy of the bills prior to the meeting for examination. I have a number of items that I would like to exclude from the bills list, which I've communicated. I move all except for the ones that I had given to Barry for exclusion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Levinson, seconded by Trustee Rosner. We have the roll, please.
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Bills list has been approved, with the exception of those items that you have commented to the administrator.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to loop back to the beginning of the meeting. There are a couple announcements that I'd like to make quickly, and then we'll get into the presentations that we have in our public comment periods. I'll try and get through these quickly. The Community Garden, the 2012 Community Garden Session began, and people who would like to be part of this can register at the Baird Center at $70 for the season, and you can find out more information at southorange.org/communitygarden. Excuse me. There's a Board of Trustees Budget Work Session scheduled for Tuesday, February 12th, at 7:30 PM here in Village Hall. Village Hall offices and facilities will be closed Monday, February 18th, in observance of President's Day. We also have a -- the Board has scheduled a Town Hall-style meeting for February 19th at 7:30 PM at SOPAC as a general forum about post-Sandy recaps and progress. Another reminder that people can pay their tax and sewer payments online, and you can do so at southorange.org/taxpayment ASP. Electronic recycling dates. You can bring electronic items to the Maplewood Recycling Center on February 2nd, and at our recycling center at Public Works on March 9th. If you have any questions about any of that, you can contact the Department of Public Works at 973-378-7741, extension 221. Additionally, there'll be some information in the upcoming Gaslight Newsletter. I had a couple other announcements that are not time-sensitive. One more that is, which is just for anybody. FEMA has extended the deadline for individual homeowner and small business disaster assistance resulting from Hurricane Sandy. If you need some information about that, you can visit our website at southorange.org. We have posted their latest press release, and you can also just visit disasterassistance.gov for more information about that. At this time, I'd like to ask Adam Lerner from Seton Hall University to come up and give his brief update about what's going on up on campus.
Good evening. I'll make this quick. We just want to announce Seton Hall has a new dean for Whitehead School of Diplomacy. It is Ambassador Thomas Patrick Malady. He's going to be the interim dean for a while. We're very excited about this. He is an ambassador, very well seasoned, and we're excited for him to join our staff. The Seton Hall University Department of Communications and the Arts is going to be presenting 12 Angry Men. This is going to start February 21st in our theater in the round. They put on great plays. The community is welcome. We hope everyone can join us. Lastly, March is Women's History Month, and each year, we hold a Women's Conference. This year, the theme is Women Inspiring Innovations Through Imagination. We are going to be honoring women in the STEM fields of science, technology, engineering, and math. This year's conference will be held in March, Friday, March 22nd. The reason I'm bringing it up now, if you're interested in doing a session throughout the day, they are doing a Request for Proposals, which can -- you can find more information on our website, but the proposals are due Monday, February 4th. They will probably grant an extension if you have a great idea. They welcome the community to participate, and if you'd like to do a session, it's very much welcome. That's all I have for today. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. In a moment, I'm going to ask some representatives from New Jersey Transit to come up and do a quick presentation. Just a really, really brief recap. This is an issue, this has been an ongoing issue since last October, when there were changes to the Midtown Direct trains that come into the South Orange Station that negatively impacted our service. We had a -- in a board meeting that month, Assemblyman McKean, Assemblywoman J.C., Governor Cody, New Jersey Transit Representatives came and talked a little bit about that, did commit to a number of points of working on trying to find some solutions here. Obviously, after that point, you know, the original timeline we agreed to severely pushed back because of Hurricane Sandy on everybody's end. And in the meantime, there's been a number of meetings, communication from residents to transit, and on January 23rd, we did meet with New Jersey Transit, and this is -- this group has grown now. And from Transit, there were a number of folks, in addition to our representatives from the 27th District, Assemblyman McKean's office, Assemblywoman J.C.'s office, Senator Cody's office, as well as the mayors of Livingston and West Orange, and myself, and Trustee Mark Rosner as well. And we, to discuss basically the concerns, discuss moving forward, and they did, New Jersey Transit did make a proposal of what would be the first steps to kind of move forward to restoring some of the service to South Orange. I don't want to take the words out of their mouth as much. We did release a joint press release, which folks may have seen jointly from the 27th Legislative District and South Orange, West Orange, and Livingston. But I would like to ask Paul Wykoff from New Jersey Transit if you'd like to come up and talk a little bit about things from your perspective.
Good evening and thanks. I'm not under any illusion that we'll get the kind of applause that the police got, but I do want to stress one thing, and that is, the village president mentioned what it takes to make a community like South Orange work, and that's true for every community in the state, all 300-plus that we serve between rail, bus, and light rail, and we're very well aware of it. And we are especially aware of it in South Orange because of the efforts of several groups, one of which is the elected officials. The village president mentioned the group that met with us last week, and we have heard from all of them regularly, as well as Senator Laughtonberg's office, I have to add in. We've heard from committed residents and riders. We got more than 1,300 signatures on a petition that Scott Greenstone spearheaded. We heard from people like Steve Kissinger and Lee Pollak and Trustee Rosner and Trustee Goldberg, who are regular riders every day, who emailed us regularly, especially after the hurricane, which I have to stress was quite valuable because it allowed us to adjust bus service at that time. So, what happened after October after Sandy? We went back, and Tom Morgan and the Rail Planning Division looked at what could be done and what would provide the most bang for the buck, if you will, to answer the concerns about the travel. And Tom and his crew focused on the trains that got the most -- the train in particular that got the most common and the most concerned, which was the 619 Midtown Direct out of Penn, New York. And he looked at what he could do to reduce that travel time. That train had been a, I think, a 29-minute train prior to October. It went up to 40 by the schedule, but many nights, more than 40, 45 or so, or even 48 or more because of logistics and congestion basically on the rails at Penn and at Secaucus. What he did was, what we proposed is, taking two stops off that train, which will reduce the time to 34 minutes and make that a reliable 34 minutes. Why would taking two stops on have such a significant effect? Couple reasons. One of the stops is what is now the Secaucus Stop, which is now used by about 300 customers who go from Penn to Secaucus. Getting them off the train and getting the train going again takes about four to five minutes every night, more like five. All right? The second stop is the Newark Broad Stop, which had enough, a low enough ridership level and enough service options from other trains that Tom could take that off without disrupting service to those people. Together, that's about six minutes. It's more -- it'll be more reliable because while the train currently, while the 619 currently is in Secaucus, another M&amp;E train passes it and gets ahead of it, and then the 619 often gets held up a little by that. Tom will correct me if I'm wrong in any of, anything I've said so far. So, basically, the proposal, it will cut the 619 travel time down to 34 minutes, a reliable 34, which is three or four minutes, more than it was prior to October 14th. Meanwhile, over the next, over the coming months between now and August, we are finishing our deliveries of 100 new multi-level cars. As those cars come in, we will look to see if we can put them on the Midtown trains on the M&amp;E. I can't make any promises about that, given what happened to our fleet with Sandy. We suffered a lot of damage, including to some multi-levels. But as we come in, we'll have more flexibility to do that, and that will help in terms of comfort, convenience, and congestion. We owe data, I believe, to Steve Kissinger still regarding passenger counts that have been done for the last two weeks, that Tom's people have been doing. The proposal that we made to the village board about changing the 619 is based on the preliminary ridership data we have, and we'll get better data as the month goes on, and when, once PATH resumes service to World Trade Center from Hoboken, and once we get full service back at Hoboken ourselves. As you may know, right now, we cannot run electric trains at all into Hoboken because we lost a substation, which will take till mid-March to get back. So, therefore, for like the Gladstone trains, which were electric trains, we're now having to run diesels into Hoboken, and that's bollocks the schedule. The other thing that we heard loud and clear from the elected officials, and in fact, Governor Cody called me yesterday and reinforced it, is that this change is a step, but it's only one step. And there is a great deal of interest, and we've heard that loud and clear, in continuing to look for ways to affect other trains and make them more efficient. And I can commit to you that we will continue to do that. I was remiss, one of the, another group that I heard from, and in fact, heard from again this morning, were some of the business, members of the business community and property owners in town. Mr. Ayusa, who owns Ridge Tire, and who's made a significant investment in new units right by the station, is continuing to make that investment, and of course, is deeply interested from his standpoint that people who will move into his units have ready access to convenient, efficient transportation, mass transit. So, one of the things that I want to try and stress is that this was not an easy lift for Tom and his people. Anytime you change one train, because of the way the logistics are, especially at Penn Station and the Northeast Corridor, it affects a whole number of other trains. It's like a Rubik's Cube. So, in order to effectuate this change, Tom will have to shift two trains from another line, the North Jersey Coast Line, to carry those people who are now getting off at Secaucus on the 619, to give them options to get to Secaucus so they can change to their trains up to Bergen and the Main and the Pasgac Valley. Meanwhile, we have to change some slots on the corridor itself. This explains why we won't be able to put this proposal into effect till March 24th. That's our next change in conjunction with Amtrak, which is going to start work on the corridor, and all these changes have to go into effect together. By March 24th also, we will have, we expect to have a temporary substation up that will allow us to run electric service into Hoboken again, which will allow us to restore more typical service on the Gladstone branch, and which will then take some of the load off the Midtown Direct trains. So, that will help congestion. A number of people have asked why we can't just restore the pre-October schedule, which was significantly more efficient for South Orange. And the answer is, the answer goes back to why the schedule changed. The trains were rearranged to take care of a congestion and crowding problem further west on the Gladstone trains. And unfortunately, one of the side consequences of that was lengthening some of the South Orange trains, some of them quite significantly, like the 619 in particular. We can't just go back to that because that would just create our same problems. We can't lengthen those trains anymore because of constraints in Gladstone. So, we had to look for a solution, at least an interim solution, that would help South Orange while not overcrowding those trains again. So, that's our proposal, and our, I know that it does not go nearly as far as a lot of customers would like. It's what we're able to do now. I fully expect it will make a significant difference to people who ride the 619. It will get people home quicker before 7 o'clock and more reliably, and the congestion will reduce as we get full service back to Hoboken, as PATH comes back up, and as we're able to shift the fleet around with the new cars over the course of the coming months, we hope. But our commitment also is to keep working with the folks who've been meeting with us, including the electeds and the interested citizens like Scott and Lee and Steve, to keep going over what potential changes we can make as time goes on. And that will actually become even more important as those new residential units are built because our ridership here is just going to go up, and we all want that. So, that's our, that's my presentation. And I have Tom here, along with Sally Morrison, John O'Neil. We can answer questions now, or we can meet with folks on the side.
Thank you for that. I do, before I give the board an opportunity to ask some questions, I do want to make two quick comments that I failed to mention before. One is that I do want to make sure to thank the county and our county executive and county officials. They've also been very involved.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I know you fielded some calls yourself, and --
Joe has been, Mr. DiVincenzo has been active.
Yes. And we thank all of our larger elected representatives for doing that. Also, from the village's standpoint, you know, I think what we've realized, and we talked about this in the meeting, and I talked about this with Governor Cody when he, you know, did say, you know, very clear that, you know, we agree, this is a first step, that this is going to be an ongoing issue. So, in that vein, what myself and a couple trustees thought might be a good idea would be to create a working group, a formal work group here in South Orange. So, what I will be prepared to do for our next meeting, after our meeting last week and between this, didn't have enough time to put it together without putting on the agenda to last second, but I will be for our next meeting prepared to create an advisory committee to myself and to the board, made up of the trustees that have been involved, the residents, Scott, Lee, Steve, and anybody else who is interested in being part of that. We don't want the group to be, you know, enormous, but we do want to make sure that people who are interested in participating in this can, and that we're all sitting at the same table. So, I'll be reaching out to folks that have been interested in helping with this and have been doing that already, and if there are any residents that are watching that haven't yet been more interested or who I haven't, don't necessarily know off the top of my head, please contact, you know, with your information and say, you know, I'd like to help out with this too. We want to make sure that everybody's at the table together, you know, kind of working towards a solution, and make sure that this is kind of a cohesive effort. This is obviously all extremely important to all of us. And again, thank you for the meeting last week and for presenting this. I do want to give board members an opportunity to ask any questions first, if there are any.
Do you have any questions?
Go ahead.
I just was curious in regards to what are your contingency plans or your strategic plans when unplanned master storms happen like Sandy, with where you store your trains? It's my understanding, and I may be -- It's my understanding, and I may be wrong, that where you stored your trains is a flood zone. And I'm just curious about that, because that's really important, because in your presentation, you said part of your challenge of accommodating and making the changes is that many of the trains were damaged. And I believe, and again, I'm not a transportation expert or whatever, I'm just using common sense, I believe that these, if these trains, like they did in New York, were, were stored in an area that would least get flooding, that perhaps the, the equipment would be protected. And I'm not being-
No.
About it. I'm just concerned in the future, because this is going to happen again-
Yeah, let me summarize-
That your plans are better.
Let me summarize what happened and what we're doing now with the, with the help of Commissioner Simpson, the DOT Commissioner, and others. The Meadowlands Maintenance Complex, which is our main maintenance facility, was built in the mid-1980s, up to about 1990, on the site of an old private rail yard. It's like much of Hudson County in that area, it's in the 1% FEMA flood zone. What was 1%, FEMA's just redone the map.
It's an old swamp.
Like most, like much of Hudson County. So as Sandy approached, our emergency management police officers, who've been, were trained by the National Hurricane Center, looked at the forecasts, looked at the surge report, looked at the track of Sandy at the time, and understanding that the railroad takes 12 to 18 hours to get all the equipment in place. So we started shutting down Sunday afternoon, alright? And at that time, their, their model, their surge model showed the Meadowlands Maintenance Complex had a 80 to 90% chance of not being flooded. Well, that wasn't the case. It did flood, as did PATH's Harrison Yard, as did the Conr, or the Norfolk Southern Yard next to us.
Well, Harrison is a flood zone too, isn't it?
Much of Hudson County is a flood zone.
Yeah.
So, what are we doing for the future? Oh, and of the trains that were at the Meadows Maintenance Complex, approximately half of them were there not because they were stored there on a daily basis, but because they were waiting in line to be repaired, to be inspected, so similar to cars waiting outside, stored at a garage, waiting their turn. So, given that, what do we do now? We had equipment stored at approximately 25 sites for Sandy, not just the Meadows Maintenance Complex, but 25 sites around New Jersey and in Pennsylvania, and in New York State, no less, because our lines go across the state lines. We can't put them out on the lines as New York did in some, some, like Metro North did in some places, simply because there are so many trees. For instance, on the M&amp;E, we had hundreds of trees down, same thing on Gladstone, obviously the Coast Line did. So what we're looking at now, and this has been in the newspaper, in Linden, where the GM plant was, which shut down in 2007, Conrail has a rail yard. There've been preliminary conceptual discussions, very preliminary, about leasing that or making some agreement with them in order to use that. There's room for about 250 cars to be stored there. And frankly, we're going to look for other sites too. Now, the maintenance complex itself, the shops, the, which are very large hangar-like buildings, can't really be moved. There are, there's essentially no place convenient to a rail line that's big enough to put a complex like that. So we have to look and figure out how to harden that from future storm surges, and also from future storm surges that now FEMA has raised, has issued new maps, proposed new flood maps, which show as along the shore too, about two to three feet higher than they were for the top of the surge. So that's what we're embarking on now.
That's good to hear.
And in fact, the Senate, the US Senate today passed the bill that the House passed last week, which will bring a grand total of $60 billion, I think, for Sandy relief, not only to New Jersey, but Connecticut and New York and so on. And there is a significant amount in that for all the transit and transportation agencies for projects to harden and mitigate for the future, so that we don't suffer like this again.
No, and, and I'm encouraged that you're thinking about alternate plans, because, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing and hoping for different results. So thank you for that.
I guess I'm, I'm still the only commuter on the board, so, you know, but I think, I've discussed with Paul and the others at New Jersey Transit numerous times, so I think most of them know how I feel about it. You know, we want express trains with one or two stops at the most, and more than we'd like to see three an hour instead of two an hour, or at least options for three trains an hour, and as well as more options with the Hoboken trains, which still seem to be very popular, but again, they're running fewer and fewer of them, making it harder for people to, who go to the downtown area. And he knows that I would have preferred more changes sooner, but, you know, we'll take it one step at a time, and, you know, we'll work with the task force and residents, and we're going to put enormous pressure on them, and maybe potentially kidnap them, lock them in a room until they agree to a new schedule.
Don't put that in the minutes.
Yeah, you can put it in the minutes. I don't want to, but where do those police officers go anyways? But I, but I don't want to rehash everything, because I think most people know how I feel, and I think, you know, some people want to comment on it, but I think it's pretty clear that we're frustrated and want changes sooner.
That's been very clear.
I hope so.
That's why I think, I think the Village President's suggestion of a working group is an excellent one.
And, and yeah, so, you know, again, I, I agree with Trustee Rosner, and I don't want to rehash, you know, we had a pretty lengthy, we've had many lengthy discussions, and I've, you know, also spoken with Jim Weinstein, who's the Executive Director of New Jersey Transit, who's been, you know, also interested in trying to find solutions as well. I do have a couple questions. One is, the, so there's, the next change is coming March 24th. What is the next change after that?
Let me ask, let me turn to Tom, my rail planner guru for that.
Probably late June or early July, Tom says.
Could you just repeat that into the-
Late June, early July, Tom says. And then again, there'll be another potential change. Generally, we do schedule changes in the spring and the fall, both for bus and rail. Very few, not, not often are they as significant as they were for South Orange in October. They generally, you know, around the margins. So June or so after March, and then September, October again.
Okay. Is there anybody else from Transit that wanted to say anything, or is that your-
Through you, through you, Mr. President. I just want to ask, I think it's an awesome idea that you're going to pull together all the disparate groups, along with the officials, for this advisory task force. What is the timeline? When is your first meeting planned, you know?
I haven't even spoke to the people who I would like to be involved, so I don't know yet.
Okay.
And I do have to formally create the committee, which I would plan to do in the next meeting, so hopefully at that point, we can, you know-
Have a schedule.
Find a time and, you know, and actually get together and start talking, whether it's via email or actual, you know, in person meetings. So, so in the next couple of weeks, we want to get that group solidified.
I'd also, I'd also be remiss, you remind me about the county executive. I have to add one more, one more name to the, to the list of electeds or their offices who have contacted us, and that is Governor Chris Christie, because the efforts or the interest and concerns of South Orange have reached the governor's office and been heard by the governor's office. I can report that without question too. Excuse me.
Yeah, I, I have one question. What is the inference of Amtrak work in the, the spring of-
It's, it's, what's the work, or how does it interplay with what we do?
Yeah, is it going to cause additional delays, or is it going to improve things?
Not, it's not going to cause additional delays for the M&amp;E. It will, I think, and I'll, I'll leave that to Tom. They're going to be working on, about 10 years ago, 12 years ago, they replaced the old wooden ties on the Northeast Corridor with concrete. As it turned out, some batches of those were defective, for whatever reason. So they have to replace those now. Tom, is that going to cause delays on the corridor, or?
The M&amp;E schedule change in the Northeast Corridor, which is the most invested.
Can you just repeat that in?
Yeah, basically, the work is going to take place west, is that Railroad West or Compass West? I don't know. It's going to be, it's not going to affect the M&amp;E, it's going to affect the Northeast Corridor trains more, and that's one of the things that he has to change the schedule for, for all those trains, to allow for that.
But that could have a ripple effect on trains on the M&amp;E.
Not, not more than you have now, I think, because-
I just want to be sure.
Generally, the, the thing that I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, the thing, the challenges that affect the M&amp;E trains coming out of New York are the ones that happen either in New York or at Secaucus and that stretch.
Thank you. So I, I think Trustee Rosner, you know, stated again, you know, kind of our position well, which is that we sincerely do appreciate the efforts that you guys are making, although we do believe that, you know, this is one of many steps needed to find a resolution that I think we can all be satisfied with. And hopefully, between us and our residents and you guys, we can figure out how to do that and make that happen. So unless there's anything else that you'd like to say, I'd be happy to open the meeting up for our public comment section. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, and so what I want to do is, we have a sign-in sheet back there. We'll start with those folks, and move down the list.
Do you want, should you want to take comments on Jersey Transit first, or do you want to-
If, if you guys are prepared, I don't want to get into a back and forth, although if people do have questions and we get through everybody, if there's anything that you then want to respond to, you know, please feel free.
Whatever, is that sort of working and women?
We don't want back and forth.
Yeah, so, so in the interest then of, you know, trying to, to keep this meeting efficient and relevant, I will ask the residents who do have comments about New Jersey Transit to come up. And again, we're not going to get into a back and forth between each person, but if there are questions, we'll take them down, and when we're through with everybody, if there's anything that you then want to add or that we can add, we will, and then we'll move on to the rest of the public comments.
Through you, Mr. President, I would like to make a suggestion. If those of you who have questions, if you hear someone before you asked the question that you were going to ask, then to move things along, perhaps you would probably, I would encourage you to pass and not repeat the same question if you've heard it prior to your opportunity to come before the mic.
And I'm also going to ask, so people can just kind of make a line at the podium, if you like, and I just ask everybody to keep their comments to four minutes, please. And I do have to cut people off for four minutes, and wish I didn't, but Roz will be here all night. And when you get to the podium, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Scott Greenstone, South, 253 Everie Avenue, South Orange. I just wanted to point out, if there were questions, point out for the record.
Just make sure you're speaking directly in the mic.
Directly in the mic.
Sorry. Just want to point out for the record some things, some discussions that we have had with New Jersey Transit as part of the group that started the petition. On October 24th, shortly after this happened, an email, I, I'm in receipt of an email that New Jersey Transit was looking at taking these stops off of the 619 train within a couple of weeks of that email. Then Sandy hit. So hearing now that it's going to take another two months to do that same thing, I don't understand, but we'll, we'll get to that when we meet later. I also want to point out that one train does not define this village, and we discussed, we have discussed in December and through email, that yes, we did spend a lot of time focusing on the 619, 621 issue, that the whole issue is, it encompasses the two to three-hour evening rush hour period, where every single train is an average of eight to 10 minutes later and longer than what they were prior to October 14. So I just want to have that, those things on the record, and to kind of quote another resident that had said it, and I apologize, I don't know who, who it was. They basically made the point, the, the, they said, "New Jersey Transit came with a forklift, took South Orange, and put it further west than Short Hill." That, that's basically what you guys did. So I just want that on the record, and we'll talk further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, William Blake, 357 Tichener Avenue. I'm the person who said the-
Good timing.
So, thank you. You know, this is so frustrating, and it's been frustrating for a long time, and I think, as I, as I think about this, you know, we're, we're all talking about what we're going to do and how we're going to fix this, and wrangling around, and it's, it's, you know, we had service that was adequate and good. And it was changed, and it was changed suddenly and drastically in October. Now we're told sudden drastic changes are bad, and we can't do them. We have to take time, and we have to collect data, and we have to, you know, have the clicker guys and so forth, and, and these changes will take months in order to implement one small change on one train that's very bad now, that didn't used to be bad at all. You know, this isn't something that happened to New Jersey Transit. This is something that New Jersey Transit did. It was a conscious decision in scheduling, and it disproportionately impacted this town and this town only on this train line. It's extremely disproportionate. It's, it's a very significant disruption and degradation of service. It was done suddenly, and now we're going to form committees, and we're going to wrangle our heads and everything and try to figure this out, when it was thrown at us in October, just out of the blue, and very drastic. So I don't understand what is, when I'm looking at this, I'm glad there's progress being made, but I'm very skeptical, and I just don't understand why now we're concerned about not making too big or too drastic of a change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Melissa Evans-Ommitt. I am a neighbor from West Orange, but I was told this part was open to all, because it does affect us. I don't know how many of you here are commuting parents, but I am, and so is my husband, and we rely heavily on the first express train of the 513-
You have to stay to the mic-
And the 512, it kind of switched back and forth throughout the years.
You have to stay to the mic, because they can't get up for recording.
Sorry. And I'm wondering what you plan to do to help us commuting parents be able to get our children on time, with it now being 519, and currently with three stops before us, because after Sandy, we added, you added New York Broad Street. Perhaps that will disappear when things are back up and running. But now with two stops prior to South Orange, we are not able to get our children on time. Temporarily, I stress the word temporarily, Aftercare is willing to waiver the late fees, because even when you're one minute late, they do charge you $10. And that's quite pricey. That's $200 extra a month. So I'm just wondering if we'll be able to get express trains back, so we can get our children on time, because the 438 is not an option. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Anita Lewis. I own a house here in South Orange at 186 Underhill Road. I do still commute from and to here time to time, but I mainly live in Morristown now. I know this has impacted South Orange, because it's affected my commuting here, but there have also been changes that have been made to the Morristown service that have negatively impacted us as well. And I'd just like to make aware, yes, would, in the interest of full disclosure, I work for New York City Transit, so I do understand how difficult it can be to make what seem to be slight changes. But there, this is going to get worse, not better, because ridership is going to increase. So you can't just look at South Orange. I realize that South Orange is crucial, but you also have to look at what's happening down the line. Morristown is also a major commuter hub, and things there also have to be fixed with the schedule. I won't go into details at this venue, but I would like to know what is going to be done and make sure- and make sure that whatever changes happen in South Orange don't negatively impact what happens west of South Orange. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Katz. I am a South Orange resident, living in 174 Kilburn Place. I, for one, I don't pretend to speak for the rest of the people here, but I, for one, am glad that our elected officials are engaging on this, although I think many of us wish that this had happened sooner, but better late than never. I would hope that the gentleman from New Jersey Transit could answer something for me that I think a lot of other people in South Orange are very curious to know. After the October schedule changes, Maplewood's train service looks like this. 5:15, first stop. 5:41, first stop. 6:10, first stop. Our train service looks like 5:19, third stop. 5:33, second stop after transfer at Newark Broad. 5:48, third stop. 6:19, eighth stop, although this is now changing. 6:50, fifth stop. Milburn is also served by an express train, 621, first stop. So I was hoping that with the assemble of New Jersey Transit people here, they could explain to us why there is such disparate treatment of South Orange and Maplewood in the schedule after the October changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I should just point out, the 5:33 option is not on the table right now. That's been switched, so we don't have that.
Are there any other residents who want to comment on the New Jersey Transit issue? Yeah, so please just come forward.
Hi, I'm Lee Pollak from Kingsland Court, here in South Orange. You know, I didn't really come prepared to speak.
You got to stay directly into the mic.
I didn't really come prepared to speak tonight, but I would like some clarification for some residents of South Orange. There has been some discussion that the trains on our line are not back to full schedule to Penn Station, so if you could, please clarify whether or not we are. Because my understanding is that we are back to full strength on the post of October schedule, and that would mean that our trains lines, train lines as they are today are what we should expect moving forward. They're not going to get better based on anything that happens with Hoboken. So that's been something we've been seeing online, and so if NJ Transit could clarify that. This is really a discussion about two things. One, it's about crowding, and I don't think people should confuse crowding with how quickly our trains get to South Orange. The description of the number of trains and the number of stops is something that the residents group has been focused on. We, in a way, helped write the resolution that the, that the village passed that asked for, you know, multiple trains per hour under a certain amount of time. It's also been mentioned that the train schedule pre-October was satisfactory for South Orange, and we should really be here today asking for more service. We shouldn't be here today asking for what we had previously. We have a developer in the room, and I haven't met Mr. Ayuso.
You got to talk into the mic.
I'm sorry. I haven't met Mr. Ayuso, but he's prepared to invest quite a bit of dollars in this village, and I'm not sure how many units he's prepared to build here, but I know there's other developers, and it should be noted in the first reading, first reading of the resolution earlier about Third and Valley, that's 250-plus more residential units that could be built in this village in the next three or so years, depending on how quickly things move. We know the market is hot for rental units. Those are rental units that would provide, not one, but in some cases, two commuters, two New York Penn Station. So to wrap it up pretty quickly, I think NJ Transit needs to turn around from this experience and realize that the path of least resistance in scheduling is not what's best for the entire commuter population, and that we should be focused on the fact that South Orange is a commuter village with designation from NJ Transit that it is, is, I forget what the exact designation is.
We were the first.
NJ Transit, Transit Village, that doesn't have express stops.
And I think that the discussion about Maplewood and Milburn and the stops further west of us that have single stops or two stops to get there is something that really should be explained by NJ Transit and not just hide behind this notion that you can't make changes quickly. Okay? So I thank all the residents for coming out that came specifically for this discussion. And as Mr. Greenstone spoke earlier, there's no reason, we watched you during Sandy, we helped you during Sandy, as a matter of fact, we watched you make changes to this train service very quickly, extremely quickly those schedules were changed. There is no reason that NJ Transit officials can come here and say they can't make changes quickly. So we would ask, along with the representatives and developers and commuters and on behalf of the Board of Trustees, that you strongly consider making changes faster than you're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's, I guess Lee's taller than I am. My name is Steve Kitzinger. I'm at 110 Maggie Drive in South Orange. First, I would like to thank you for getting involved in the village president and getting the mayors of West Orange and Livingston involved too, but I really wish you had gotten involved earlier and worked with the residents who had gotten involved back in October, November, and not worked parallel with us. We had information we could have shared with you, you, I'm sure, got information to share with us, that maybe we could have been a more effective group. I don't think we've been effective at all because the changes that are being promoted are two months down the road, they're just at the margins, they're not addressing the real problem. In fact, when we were here in October, Assemblyman McKean asked the question, it still hasn't been answered. What was the basis for making the decision to send the locals to South Orange and the expresses to Maplewood and beyond? Well, we still haven't gotten that. I sought the data from New Jersey Transit group, an Oprah request. I didn't get any real data because the data was old. The data wasn't from the past six months, it didn't, there hadn't been a census taken as to what the population of riders using each of the stops on the line for over a year. So we had a decision that was made that had a horribly adverse effect upon the commuters using the South Orange train station. It was made without data. Now we're told, well, we have equipment problems, and we're going to get 100 double-deckers over the summer, and we're going to try and get them on the M and E line. Well, that's all well and good, but in the past, we've been told, well, we can't have the double-deckers on some of these M and E line trains because it stops South Orange, because they go all the way up to Gladstone, and the Gladstone stop does not have a setup to work and do maintenance and inspect the double-decker trains out there. So we can get, New Jersey Transit can get an unlimited number of trains, but any train that stops at South Orange that's going onto Gladstone may have that problem, and that's not apparently going to change. I'm afraid we've been sold a bill of goods, and we're stuck with the crappy schedule till least October. It's not going to change anymore than at the margins, maybe again over the summer. I have no reason to expect we're going to get substantially better service in October or September, whenever the next change is. We've heard nothing to even suggest that anything's going to really be improved meaningfully at any time in the near future. We've been at this for three months now, and we're told it's going to take another two months to take two stops off the train, one of which doesn't even require rejiggering a train. Why can't the Broad Street stop be taken off now? It doesn't require the moving of any trains. I'd pose that question to Mr. Wykoff and Mr. Morgan. No, Morgan. I just don't understand. We need to work together. I know there have been personality conflicts, there's communication problems, not everyone is able to view your Facebook page where you sometimes post things about what you're doing, your activities, and maybe you've been communicating with...
30 seconds.
And I just implore you, work with the people. There are a lot of residents of South Orange who are public relations and communications professionals. Reach out to them, work with them, work with the residents, and try and put the personality conflicts aside, and let's work together. And let's put the pressure, and let's not let Cody, McKean, and J.C. off the hook. There are people in Trenton. New Jersey Transit responds to Trenton, not only South Orange, but they respond to Trenton because that's where their money comes from.
Thank you.
We need to push them. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else who wishes to comment about New Jersey Transit?
One more.
David Solomon, a little on the weather, so please excuse me. 257 Irving Avenue, South Orange.
You got to talk into the mic, and we can't hear you.
David Solomon, can you hear me? 257 Irving Avenue, South Orange. Been involved with this since the beginning, and I look forward to working together, the residents and our elected officials. One of the things that seems somewhat apparent is that any schedule changes that are made are a negative sum game elsewhere on the line. And one thing, while we're concerned, the tactical, the here and the now, we know ridership will increase here along the M and E. What is the long-term strategic plan? 10, 5 years down the road? It doesn't sound like, we haven't heard anything, so I won't postulate about that, but based on the physical components you have in place now, whether it's the actual rail equipment, the format of the stations, or the three rail lines converging into two after Maplewood or Milburn, what is the capital plan or projects down the road?
You have to talk into the mic, they can't pick it up for recording purposes.
I'm asking...
Gets people home to hear you. If you don't open the mic, they can't hear you.
For those of you still watching, I'm asking about the long-term capital plan.
The ratings are way up tonight.
Okay. I'm doing what I can to help out. The long-term capital plan for not only rail equipment, but for the rail itself and the stations along the Morrison Essex Line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Bob Adelman, 220 Rolston. Very briefly, the theme I heard from the speakers here tonight, and when I was standing in the back before the meeting started, can be expressed the way a friend of mine who used to live on Harding Drive, a trial attorney in New York, New Jersey, used to do it in a complicated case. He'd say to the jury, "How come?" Just those two words. And what people have been asking me, they can only direct it to you, the board, what they really mean for New Jersey Transit. Maplewood has these trains, South Orange has these trains. Explain, "How come?" And I think somehow we have to get an answer, or the whole thing is pointless. Thank you.
Dan Goldberg, 59 Glendy Road, South Orange. I just wanted to ask a question, maybe make a statement. I'm not sure if I'm raising the obvious or not, but...
You got to talk directly into the mic.
I question whether or not the numbers that you're getting in terms of ridership...
Got to turn around, faceless, he'll hear you.
The numbers that you're getting in terms of ridership, that you're measuring in January, February, whatever it may be, whether or not you're in fact getting under recording as a result of the fact that people are frustrated. I know I have, on many occasions, just said, "Screw it, I'm going to drive to Newark and take the train from there," and I'm probably not the only one doing that. So I just, I'm only raising that, and I think it's a valid factor that should be considered when evaluating the numbers and what they may actually be.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, we are going to do a public comment section again for everybody else in a second. Trustee Sord, do you have a very brief comment?
Yeah. Getting back to, I think Mr. Pollak kind of triggered this comment that I'm about to make, and it goes back to sometimes good decisions and deeds when encouraged to step forward and be the first. The history regarding the Midtown Direct with New Jersey Transit in South Orange is that they had this plan of encouraging development for transit villages, and they asked a lot of towns near the, with train stations to step forward to become a transit village, and also opening up the parking adjacent to any of these train stations to other municipalities around. And they had a very, very difficult time of getting that first or a few towns and villages or municipalities to step forward. South Orange was the first municipality to step up to the plate with their whole vision about developing these transit hubs, and this is our reward.
So I have two real quick comments, and then I'll see if anybody from New Jersey Transit does want to respond to any of the questions, which I do also have all written down, I'm sure you've taken those too. One is, I indeed also hope there's going to be cooperation going forward. I did reach out to some of the residents early on in the process unsuccessfully to try and meet about this. Moving forward, this working group will hopefully create a cooperative relationship, and we should be able to use each other's energy for the benefit of actually working towards a resolution. I do think that's pretty important and something that we all try and do. And again, quickly to echo what Trustee Sord and a few others have mentioned, South Orange is growing. As Mr. Ayuso being here and others, the, most organizations that do talk about planning and population growth, especially sustainable planning based around public transportation, you know, look at towns often considered old suburbs or first suburbs like South Orange, Maplewood, Montclair, West Orange, that we are going to be centers of population growth in the state of New Jersey over the next 10 or 20 years. People want to move into more suburban, urban living, and that centers a lot around public transit options. You know, we have a GITN system that we continue to try and expand on, although that is almost completely at the mercy of New Jersey Transit, and whether we're going to be able to continue to sustain the GITN program because those were given to us by grants from you guys. And we do hope that support will continue in full, and not only in full, but continue the support, growing the support, so we can continue to grow our public transit system that takes people to your public transit system. And again, I also do want to make sure to particularly thank the West Orange and Livingston mayors and the residents from those towns. We have about 3,600 or 3,700 riders a day, I believe it's a South Orange station, somewhere in that number. Hundreds of those are from West Orange and Livingston who do come to South Orange, and it is indeed a hub. And it's going to become more of that as more dense residential downtown is built, and as people continue to see towns like this as a really great place to live where you don't need a car and things like that. So we do see that growth coming, and hopefully that will be taken into account in some of these resolutions going forward. So Mr. Wykoff, if you'd like, if you have any comments, be happy to go kind of from your notes, if you like, and if you do have a question, I did write down all the questions here as well.
I'd like to add one question. When you make schedule changes, are they subject to public hearing?
Pardon? I didn't, I'm sorry.
When you make schedule changes, are they subject to public hearing?
No, no.
Maybe that's something that we should look at as well.
Let me divide it into two, let me propose, some of the questions that were asked, I think, would be better handled by meeting with Tom and I, and those who are asking the questions outside, those are the more detail-oriented ones. There's a couple things that I want to, I want to deal with. One is, I guess, and this is, I think, the most succinct way to say it is, "How come?" And I don't think I've done, or we've done a very good job communicating that, because the reason, which I think we tried to communicate, but obviously we did not succeed, how come Maplewood now has these expresses and South Orange doesn't? It goes back to what rail planning did in October was to relieve overcrowding on trains that were going out to Gladstone. What that meant from a logistical standpoint was, they had to take those riders, that very large number of South Orange riders, off those trains so that they could accommodate the West people, because adding the West people and the South Orange people didn't work. That's if I'm, if I'm expressing it correctly, Tom. More or less. So in order to shift the riders... So in order to shift the ridership and make those trains going further west less crowded, that's why the trains were shifted so that they first stopped at Maplewood or Milburn or whatever, and then continued on. And the South Orange trains were shifted so that that very, very large amount of ridership that goes to South Orange was then put to those trains. That's the "how come." And to answer a second part of that, which is the drastic, you know, the idea that the change in October was an instant change, well, those changes occur twice a year for a reason, because that's when we and Amtrak coordinate. And obviously, the planning for that change took, started, began long before October. In terms of Trustee Levinson's proposal or idea about public hearing, frankly, on a macro scale, I don't think that would work, just because every town in the state would get involved. But in terms of certainly moving forward, I would expect that the working group and we would be in a constant conversation about that. One point that the President has raised, the residents have raised, and it's absolutely valid is, and Mr. Ayuso and I had a conversation about that this morning, he reached out to us, to Jim Weinstein, and we talked, and he told me about his plans for investment and so on. South Orange is gonna grow. And in addition, there are other places along the line. East Orange is very interested in redeveloping around their station. On other lines, my old hometown of Matutchen, the Parking Authority there, which in some ways, Matutchen's a community similar to South Orange, it's an older suburb, it has a downtown which actually has come back from what it was in the 80s. And the Parking Authority there wants to redevelop a significant amount of acreage right by the train station with a very large mixed-use residential, commercial development. So we're gonna see growth on the northeast corridor, we're gonna see it on the M&amp;E, we expect to see it on the Raritan Valley Line, we expect to see it a number of places. And we are challenged, and that's one of the things that we are investigating now, our planning group, how are we gonna expand, that the Governor in fact mandated that we look, how are we gonna expand our capacity into, to and from New York over the next 10, 15, 20 years? So.
Another tunnel.
Maybe a tunnel.
Another tunnel.
The multi, well, and as you know, there's proposals out there now, the Number 7 subway proposal's kind of gone by the wayside, but Amtrak's Gateway proposal is still out there and got some funding, I believe, in the bill the Senate passed today. But the multi-levels will help, but they're an interim, an interim step. All right? So that is something that we indeed are, are going to be looking at and continuing to look at for quite some time. It's not an easy, quick fix. So I hope that makes the "how come" a little more understandable, even if it's not, even if the consequence was not accepted, acceptable to South Orange, but that was the genesis of the changes in October, okay? That's why those, that was the simple reason for that shift, Maplewood versus South Orange. Two to three-hour window, I think we could talk about on the side. The whole idea is to, I heard, and I didn't catch her last name, was it Melissa Evans? Yeah. Yeah, we're, I'm, we're aware of, because our people pay those fees too if, when we're late. And it's, yeah, it used to be a dollar a minute, now it's gone up significantly. Pardon? Well, that's why we have to keep working. That's, I mean, that's, that's what we have to, we have to keep, keep doing. Lee raised a point about the effect of Hoboken. My guys, Tom and those guys who do this every day and have done it for years, strongly, strongly are confident that once Hoboken is back in full service, both PATH and us, it will make a difference in terms of congestion on the trains, in terms of crowding, because there are a significant number of riders who shifted to the Midtown Direct because they can't get PATH to the World Trade Center from Hoboken. All right?
So just to clarify on that, I think part of that question was that a lot of New Jersey Transit's announcements have kind of said full restoration has been, you know, of pre-hurricane Sandy levels. Perhaps that is specific to the Midtown Direct, Penn Station out here trains, and does that not include Hoboken when you say that?
Yeah, 'cause that goes to, Lee asked about that too, I think, about is it 100% service to New York? Tom, what's the answer?
That's our last announcement, it wasn't the New York service, we're back.
If you're gonna answer in detail, if you could just come up unless you're prepared to repeat all of it.
And in fact, that was what our announcement was, that the New York services were back to 100%. We still have a number of services on the Hoboken service to the Morrison Essex Line, the Montclair Line, and the Main Marion Lines that are still not back to their normal level of service. We expect to put a number of those back as part of the March change, which should take some more pressure off the Midtown trains and some of the other services as well. So that is another piece of the March change that will help provide some relief.
Thank you.
Long-term capacity, I think I answered that as best I can. That's something we've gotta work on, and it's gonna be a major, it's gonna be a major challenge. "How come?" I think that answered. Steve had asked about, and I can't read my writing, so.
That's why I got one of these here. We, I think the question was about why the Newark stop can't be taken, taken off immediately? And if that, if that, if that stop had an impact on the schedule, that was minimal enough to do that now?
That's something I would defer to my expert here again.
And that also relates to making some other adjustments to other trains so that you actually get a clear path when we take that stop off. So when we take the Secaucus and Newark stop off, we're also gonna be changing a couple of trains out of Hoboken that serve Montclair and the M&amp;E so that your train actually gets a clear path, so it gets full advantage of taking those stops off. So again, that's part of the coordination of, we're changing, you know, a couple of trains on the coastline by up to six minutes. We're changing a Raritan Valley train a few minutes later, we're changing two or three trains out of Hoboken all, along with those changes, those stops, to actually take a full advantage of it and to get a clear path. So that's why it's all part of that one process, and that's why it happens on March 24th when we're working with Amtrak on the piece that involves the coastline.
What else, folks, President? What have I missed here?
One of the other questions was about how do you compensate in these numbers from people that have already changed basically their commuting habits? So if you're taking ridership levels now, they may not be reflective of what the ridership levels were, the pre-October schedule change.
Yeah, let me have Tom address that too, and that's why we're gonna continue to take ridership levels for the foreseeable future until, particularly until Hoboken's back.
In fact, we have folks out repeating some of the counts we did the last two weeks tonight, and we'll have folks getting in last, tomorrow night, doing some trains paired up to, to take a look at, another look at some things. And we'll continue to do that, because one of the things we're concerned about is that with the changes that happened after Sandy, that we may see some permanent shifts and patterns. You know, some folks have steered away from switching to the Midtown trains because they don't like Penn Station, they prefer Hoboken, but many of them now had two or three months to get accustomed to Penn Station, so we may see a permanent shift to the Midtown, or we may see a shift back. You know, so those are things we'll be looking at and reevaluating, especially after the March change, when we've put, you know, more service back to Hoboken, see how that looks. And also, of course, when PATH is fully restored at the end of February.
So when you're looking at the ridership numbers, is it safe to say that you're not looking at them in a vacuum, i.e., you know, what's just happening in South Orange? Are you, you know, trying to kind of compare that to shifts in other areas of the service where you might be able to say, "Well, this changed here, you know, it's 200," I mean, I'm sure it's not so simple, but 200 less riders here on a day and now 200 more riders per here a day?
We attempt to get at least one count every month in every peak period train in the system, both out of New York and Hoboken and Newark Penn Station for the Raritan Valley Line, so that we, over time, sort out the iterations that are due to some event that's going on somewhere, a sporting event, or a concert, or things like that, or perhaps just a deviation in the operation that causes some riders to shift between trains. So we do that process, and when we have things we see that look odd, we often get two or three counts on that particular train in a month.
Okay.
So that's a process that we have ongoing to verify those shifts. And this is a system-wide process.
Trustee DeSofort, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious, if you have these numbers, I'm sure you do, and it doesn't have to be exact, what are the number of riders from South Orange compared to the number of residents in Gladstone who uses the train?
Well, it's more the, for the Gladstone branch, it's more the cumulative effect of all the stations. So with, South Orange is right now the largest all-day ridership station on the line, slightly ahead of Summit in our last fiscal year statistics, by about 50 or 60 riders a day.
Okay, then let me.
But then if we look at, for instance, the four stations, the first four stations, for instance, in the Morristown Line, still exceed in total riders the South Orange ridership, as an example. The stations on the Gladstone Line, it's the cumulative effect, and for the Midtown Direct service, they only have two trains all, all day, two trains in the morning and two trains at night. So those riders are all clustered on those two trains. So they have an effect on those two trains in a large, larger proportion than the overall ridership for each station.
Okay. So if you ranked stations, let me ask it in another way. I understand, I get it, but just out of curiosity, if you ranked as far as total volume, where would South Orange rank?
On the entire system?
Uh huh.
I believe you're number nine.
Number nine.
There are eight stations in the northeast quarter that are larger, some of which are, I think, more than twice as large.
Okay. And Gladstone is what number?
Gladstone itself is very small, but it's the.
What number would that be? Just, you know.
I think it's 100 or something a day.
So they're 100 and something, and we're number nine? Okay.
Yeah. But again, but there's other stations on the branch that are much larger than Gladstone, and it's the cumulative effect.
I see.
I think.
Urban Heights, New Brown, Russell Street, it's a live station.
I think, I think one of the issues, though, when you, when you do your counts, is that for South Orange, a lot of people use it as a switching point, especially in the morning. They're taking a train that stops in South Orange, Hoboken train, and switching to a Midtown Direct. So anyone who sees the 750 Hoboken or the 815 Hoboken train, you can see 50, 60 people getting off and switching for the train. So it's like another 100 people who are using the South Orange station, which really don't get into your counts because you're going by tickets or whatever, where the counts are going. Going home, on the reverse, there's a couple of times where the trains work out for people who want to take it to South Orange or out of Maplewood usually, and they do the same kind of reverse switch, which I don't think shows up in your counts for what's going on. But it just shows another 100 people that we know in the morning are using the station.
And that's actually a common practice at a lot of the stations on the M&amp;E. People will jump on a train to go one or two stops.
But they no longer use Newark as that switching point. They're using South Orange, Maplewood, and, I mean, they might use, some people might, but more people are using South Orange and Maplewood than ever before for those switching points.
Summit, South Orange, Maplewood, Broad Street, I mean, they're all, they're all brick-churched, we see that effect on all those stations.
I think you get the gist of it, though. We want, we want the express trains back. We're not really that overly concerned with Maplewood and West, as I said. Not our issue. South Orange is, you know, is a priority, and if we're number one, two, or three on the M&amp;E line, we should be treated like number one, two, or three. And, you know, and I understand you're gonna meet with a few of the people now, and we'll, and we'll meet with you again in two or three weeks when we have our group put together.
Do you guys have anything else to add at this point?
No, it's just that, one thing that I will, that I will add is that the planning department, not the rail planning, but the general planning department, tries to keep track of ongoing development and proposals, like Mr. Ayuso's and the one that you referenced.
Third and Valley.
Third and Valley.
Right. And that, that has got to be factored in to our five-year forecast, 10-year forecast, and so on. So that's one of the things that we'll also be discussing with you, with you folks when the, when the committee is constituted.
Okay. All right.
Again, I want to thank you, Village President, and the trustees, and Scott, and Lee, and the other citizens for working with us, holding our feet to the fire. I don't know if that "thank" is the right word, but we do hear you. It's not, it's not just lip service. We are really working, and the fact that, you heard Tom say, that to change this 1619, he's got to adjust trains on the Montclair-Boothin, the North Jersey Coast, and slots in New York. That's what, if this was 15 years ago, at the start of Midtown Direct, which I guess 96, when we ran instead of 700 trains a day, something like 450, there was a lot more flexibility to move around, there was a lot more room to move things around within those windows. We're at the point now, particularly in New York, where the slots during rush hour are completely filled through the tunnel, that we don't have a lot of room. That's what makes it so difficult.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to continue on with our public comment period. I'm gonna go down the list here, and then if, do get to anybody who isn't on here, people certainly have the opportunity to speak at that time. So the, I'd also ask if anybody is, was here for the transit discussion and is leaving, to just try and take the conversation, not in the hallway, but all the way downstairs, so it doesn't kind of seep over here, would really appreciate that.
Can we just post comment objective session?
We didn't pass the resolution, so we can't do it. Okay. Dana Lowe?
And again, just to remind folks, if you can keep your comments to four minutes, and just state your name and address for the record, please. And just make sure you're speaking directly into the mic. It really, it does not, kind of have to be right around it.
Sure. I'm Dana Lowe. I live at 72 Raymond Avenue. I've owned the property for 12 years. I'm here to reiterate my opposition to the installation of a traffic light. It would be outside of my bedroom window. I'm, I guess, I, I guess the issue is, is if a traffic light is the only reasonable option to resolve any speeding issues, I would propose some alternatives, or ask if alternatives have been considered before the installation. I understand that other New Jersey towns in New York City have installed pedestrian refuge islands, curb extensions, and chicanas. I ask that that would be considered before the installation, if it has not already. I want, like that to be on the record. I'd also reiterate my written objections that I've previously submitted to the Board and to the county officials. I also would, I guess, state that, obviously, there's a risk for a decrease in property values for the homeowners where this light is gonna be right in front of our property, specifically my bedroom, the noise, the traffic, the congestion. And I also would ask fellow residents to take into consideration the historic nature of the community. It is a historic district. I also would raise the point that if safety is an issue or speeding, that fellow residents would consider that many students, particularly elementary school students, catch the bus at Bowles and Raymond. So I would ask if a traffic light is also being considered to be installed at that intersection. So another alternative I would propose is maybe a flashing light. Basically, I just think a full traffic light installation is a bit extreme and unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. George?
George Mathias, 219 South Orange Avenue, apartment 501, South Orange, New Jersey. The reason why I'm over here is because on the corner of Scotland Road and South Orange Avenue, there is a problem of motorists not yielding to pedestrians in the crosswalk. They even have the nerve to disrespect our officer who faithfully, faithfully tries to enforce the law on the traffic. They nearly almost hit the officer, so some type of enforcement by either undercovers or something should be put in the area, because this goes on, on the corner of Scotland and South Orange Avenue, and on the corner of Prospect Street and South Orange Avenue, there have been near mishits. I have been a witness. I have been a witness, I've been almost a victim of motorists who just come flying around these bends and don't want to yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk. For South Orange, I do have to say that South Orange does an excellent job, because they have those signs in the middle of the crosswalk that says, "You must yield to pedestrians", but some motorists just don't get it. They will come flying through, they're like, they're on Route 280. And my second topic for discussion is the Rite Aid Pharmacy at 135 South Orange Avenue. Every year we go through this. They refuse to comply with code enforcement rules about putting rock salt or something down on the sidewalk. Tonight, coming down to Village Hall to the meeting, from the property line of Preston Funeral Home to in front of the Rite Aid, it was like a skating rink. So I took my diligence inside of this Rite Aid Pharmacy, and I asked to speak to the manager. So the manager's name was Mike. So I asked Mike, I said, "Please, Mike, you need to put more rock salt on the sidewalk in front of your store, because somebody is going to fall." As a matter of fact, earlier this evening, a woman that lives in my building, she almost fell too, which was earlier, like around maybe five or six o'clock, I'm approximating. And he says, "Well, what do you want me to do? Tell the weather not to get cold?" I said, "No, but you should be responsible as a storekeeper in South Orange to put rock salt down." He says, "Well, I'm sorry, I ran out." I mean, Village Hall does an excellent job with their property. There are other homeowners, property owners, storekeepers, that do as best as a job that they can do, but then there are a few others in town that maybe need a visit from code enforcement, because they don't want to comply with the rules of South Orange. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize, the next name, Robinson, maybe the last name?
I'm sorry about that bad penmanship. Butch Robinson, 265 Scotland Road. I live diagonal from Dana, and my house faces Scotland Road, and my driveway would be impacted, as my neighbor's driver would be impacted, by a traffic light on that corner. And while I share everyone's concern about speeding and safety on the street, I'm not convinced that a traditional light would actually serve that purpose. I think that many other options should be considered. I know that you've received a recommendation from the village transportation advisory group or board or council, agreeing with the Essex County's idea of installing a light. But I wondered if other options hadn't been considered, like a lit walkway? I know a lot of municipalities have those, a lit pedestrian walkway that someone raised with yellow flashing lights and then solid lights for the pedestrians to tuck it across. I think that with the volume of traffic, of pedestrian traffic that we have crossing Scotland, that makes a great deal more sense than a traditional light. For several mornings during the week, I've stood in front of my house and counted cars. I'm about a hundred and fifty feet from the corner. So when the light is placed on the corner, traffic will stop in front of the house next to me, which is right on the corner, my home and the home next to mine. Within a two-minute interval, twenty-eight cars pass me. So if that light lasts for thirty seconds, there'll be fifteen cars backed up from that light going north on Scotland Road. So the amount of traffic that we see every day at the intersection right here, South Orange Avenue and Scotland, will be the same traffic that stopped at that intersection there. It's alleviated here, because we have three options: a right turn, a straight, or, I'm sorry, left turn, straight, or right turn. We don't have that option in Scotland and Raymond. There'll be one single line of traffic. So buses and trucks and private cars will be lined up, waiting for that light to change. Obviously, we do have to consider, I would love it to be considered, the decrease in my property value because of that, the noise and the trash, and the realization, or the real idea, that people will still speed, they'll simply speed to the light, they'll see the light is turning yellow, and pick up speed to get through the light. So it would seem to me that another option might be even to use traffic cameras and actually make money, you know? I don't believe that signage alone is a deterrent to most people wanting to speed. Most folks travel as quickly as they can, because they feel it's safe. It doesn't matter what the speed limit is. If they think twenty-five is too slow, they're going to drive thirty-five, they're not going to drive sixty. So they are going to do thirty-five, because they, you know, they can control the car. If they go through a specific section of Scotland Road, a flash goes off, and they get a ticket for sixty bucks, a hundred bucks, they won't do that again. And the village will make money. On top of that, I find it incredible that still, there's no way to control buses speeding down Scotland Road. Forget about the private citizens, but-
Thirty seconds.
-buses speeding down Scotland Road, to me, is ridiculous. There's got to be some kind of communication between this group and bus companies to stop that. So in closing, I think that other options have to be considered. I'm very much concerned about the change in the vibe and the ambiance of the Montrose area with a traffic light installed at that corner. Thank you.
Thank you. John Somero?
John Somero, 179 Scotland Road. I actually live a hundred and eighty feet the other direction on Scotland Road, and I have the same issue with the queuing, and discussed it with my family as to what do we want to do, support or not support this initiative. And in the end, it's really about what are the issues? And there's two, actually, two issues. There's a safety in crossing the street at the crosswalk, which is a school crossing, and there's a speeding issue. It's been a noted issue since I moved onto the street nine years ago. I've talked to numerous people about this, ad nauseam, and still nothing happens. So what ended up happening was, the county came out and did an assessment. They are recommending a traffic light. Through many acts of many people that live on Scotland Road and the surrounding streets, we put a proposal, not being a traffic light, to the county of multiple things that they could do. After an assessment that was done by the village transportation safety board, as well as the county, I can give you numerous examples that have recently happened. Two are with the crossing guard involved, where he's out there in the middle of the street, whistling, stop sign up, and yet, two separate vehicles blew through the intersection while he's crossing kids. So not really sure what we want to do as a village here, because if we don't do something, you know, I don't, is a traffic light really needed? Is it not needed? Well, if you're going to disobey a crossing guard with a whistle and a stop sign, the placard that's up there right now, witnessed it myself the other day. A guy was trying to cross Scotland Road, coming from Raymond down the hill, he was in the middle of the intersection, I stopped for him, and everyone coming southbound kept flying right through. He's standing there looking at me, and I'm looking at him, and I'm waiting for you to cross, but you can't cross, because seventeen cars right in a row ignored the placard that's sitting in the middle of the street. So we discussed it at home, and although we will be impacted with the buses and the trucks, and Roselli hauling, who comes through at five o'clock in the morning, with the roll-offs bouncing the windows in the house, we're going to support the traffic light, because without the traffic light, there is no safe crossing of the street. As far as the speeding goes, there's other initiatives that have been put on the plate. We have been asking the town to purchase some sort of "Your Speed Is Radar Control Detector" sign. This has now been a recommendation by the village transportation safety board to the county, to add one coming in each direction, but as the previous resident, who is my neighbor, stated, it's not just about signage. Yes, that's going to slow down one out of every ten. It's also about enforcement, and the problem in this town is there is no enforcement, and we need to have also some enforcement, besides the things that the county, the engineers, and everyone working together is willing to do. So I would appreciate if the board would support anything that the county is willing to do, and would, you know, throw in something. If the county right now is footing the full bill for this project, if something like a "Your Speed Is" is going to make a damn difference to the speeding issue, that the town spends two or three thousand dollars on the road and does that. And I've been told that the town is not allowed to do anything on the county road, when in fact, the town, if asked for permission, can do something on this county road. Thirty-six kids live on the street, under the age of seven. Nine years ago, when I moved there, there was one. Enough said.
Thank you. Josh Sherman?
Josh Sherman, 321 Scotland Road, and I'm here in favor of the traffic light. We've lived at our house for six years now, which is on the long straightaway part coming out of the red light at Montrose, where the cars are typically going probably about forty, forty-five miles an hour. I commute every day from my house on Scotland Road to Springfield, straight down Scotland and Valley all the way, and I can say for absolute certain that what keeps cars from speeding is traffic lights. There are a number of them in Maplewood, and it is impossible to speed through Maplewood. You can't get above the speed limit, because there's a traffic light. I also see that because they have a traffic light at a regular interval, there's not a tremendous backup of traffic, and there are not desperate homeowners trapped in their driveway, unable to get out. I really don't think that this is as big a deal as people have made it out to be. I'm also unaware of any study that shows an actual decrease in value from a property, from a traffic signal. And I would encourage the board to take action now, to install a traffic light, so you don't have to take action later to install a memorial traffic light.
Thank you.
Trustees, village president?
You pull it up.
Yep.
The mic will go up.
My name is Brian Mariajo. I live at 169 Scotland Road. I'm here in support of the traffic light. Every day, I walk around the village, and it's at least two or three times that I'm almost run over by motorists who ignore crosswalks, the signs in the middle of the street, anything short of a light, most people just fly through it. So my main concern is for pedestrian safety, getting between the east side and the west side of town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sherri Sax?
Hi, good evening. My name is Sherri Sax. I live at 315 Scotland Road. I also live by the straightaway, where I've noticed incredibly high speeds. It's shocking. My main concern is safety out here, because I'm supporting the traffic light. I have two young kids, they're three and four. I often try to make a crossing at Raymond and Scotland to go to the playground, and I've been there many times with my stroller and two kids, and I can't cross with the current setup. Nobody really, I don't think we have a culture of people waiting at pedestrian crossings as much as motorists, so I find that it's difficult and impossible to cross there. In the mornings, I often run, and I fear the safety of the crossing guard, because people do not respect what he's doing, and it's just become a very unsafe street, and somewhat reckless. About six months ago, we had somebody drive on to what is like the front between the curb and my grass, knock over a tree. I can't imagine they were doing twenty-five miles per hour to make that happen. So I'm here just to express my support for-
Thank you. Pau? Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Pau Santos-Massas. I live on Scotland Road, 315. I also support the traffic light. I think, as you said, South Orange and the areas adjacent to downtown are very walkable, and that's a great thing, but to be able to walk, you need to be able to cross, you need to be able to cross Scotland Road to be able to go to Grove Park, to go to Marshall School. And if you live in that section of Montrose, you need to be able to go to the Bear's Island. You need to be able to go to the pool. Our crossbar, as many people mentioned, is often in danger every morning. I see him every morning. I don't know his name, but I'm really grateful for the work he does. And also, I think, for one, I think cars already stop at that intersection. They stop going on Raymond, because it's often so hard to cross. And also, the visibility is not very good, and if you're going uphill, it is, it is a very tricky cross to make, even if you're driving. So it's not only for the safety of pedestrians, but also for the safety of, you know, the drivers on that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you just repeat your name one time, because she didn't get it for the record?
Yes, my name is Pau Santos-Massas, 350 Scotland Road.
You got that spelled? Dave Rubin?
My name is David Rubin. I live at 341 Scotland Road, which is on the straightaway part halfway between Montrose and Raymond. I've heard both sides on the question of the traffic light, and I realize that is a very sensitive and dangerous intersection, as well as the other cross streets. I have a dog, and I frequently cross at Terrell, and I'm concerned about not only that intersection at Raymond, but the other sections of the long stretch on Scotland, particularly before it starts turning towards Raymond. I have also talked about the two radar detector speed limit signs, and I'm concerned that people are still going to continue speeding until they make that curve past Terrell, until they see the traffic light coming up upon Raymond. So I'm not sure if this is the complete solution to all of our problems, and I appreciate the people's concerns who live near the intersection there, but I'd like to get some more information about looking at it from a more holistic standpoint, and we talked about enforcement, about speeding. I think there's still going to be an issue about speeding, and to be honest, I take my life and my dog's life into our hands when we try to cross by Terrell, so I still think there's an issue over speeding that really hasn't been fully addressed and needs to be looked at further. Thank you.
Thank you. Alec Fisher?
Sorry, Axel, Axel Fisher. I'm at 332 Vos Avenue. Again, I'm back to support the traffic light. It's abundantly clear that we have a speeding issue. Even the residents that oppose the traffic light made that clear. Steps have to be taken. It appears they have to be drastic, as we know the drivers that drive through South Orange, they cut through Raymond, they go on Vos, they cut through Mead, they go through up in Wyoming to get back on South Orange, wherever you look. I think the only logical step, and I'm somewhat baffled that it's not clear now, size is a traffic light, and to assume that a traffic light will not slow down traffic is just unreasonable, and the traffic light will be certainly the most logical and the most effective measure. If that is not being, if that's not possible, and the outcome is something different, the outcome has to be something, and it has to be something that recognizes that, while we all appreciate the aesthetics of the historic area that we live in and the beauty of our town, safety comes first, everything else comes second and third. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not live on Scotland Road. I live at 9 East Clark Place. We've heard all of these arguments before, many times. I think we've tried to take a reasoned approach. We've, we took the county's recommendations. We said, "Okay, is there something else we can do?" We had the transportation advisory committee go over, I don't know, I was at some of the meetings, maybe there are eight or nine of these, all of the things mentioned here, you know, lights on the road, blinking lights, and it came down very clearly that what's going to make people stop is a red light. No tricks, no fancy lights, but we need a red light there. It's a busy road, we all know that. We have to slow the traffic, and it'll slow the traffic, and it'll provide safe crossing. I think it's a no-brainer. We've talked about it forever. Let's move it forward, so the county can put in the light. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil?
Hi, Neil Blundell, 273 Scotland Road. I'm next to Butch, so I'm about three houses down from where the- I'm next to Bush, so I'm about three houses down from where the proposed traffic light will be. So I have two children, a four-year-old and a two-year-old. They go to Mickey Freed Daycare, so I do have to cross Raymond right at that corner. My wife does, you know, every day. So, you know, it's a difficult problem because there is speeding and it's difficult to cross. So I do admit that. But I'm also posed with the fact that if you do put a traffic light in there, because we do have 12,000 cars a day, you're going to get, as Bush mentioned, a pretty long lineup affecting, you know, each way, probably six to eight to 10 houses. Where, before I moved to South Orange, I was in Jersey City, and I was next to a traffic light, and the noise pollution, traffic backups, garbage, it was actually pretty negative. And I think that goes to the property values, and I think we will see an impact. We've got a lot of really nice, large homes there, and I think there will be a negative impact because of the traffic buildup. You know, another thing is too that I worry is, you know, right now, maybe it's not the easiest getting out of the street onto Scotland Road because it's quite busy. I fear the fact that if you put a traffic light there and you get a constant buildup, will we actually, between the traffic buildup and then building traffic, will we actually be able to get out of our houses? So when I take a step back and say, what can we do? I know there's been a lot of talk about it, but I still don't think the traffic light ultimately corrects the speeding problem. When it's a green light, no one slows down at all. You know, when there's a red light, obviously, you get a pause, and that will facilitate crossing. But one of the major issues that I hear everyone complain about is everyone's going 45 miles per hour, and only sometimes you'll correct that issue. So I'm kind of more in favor of enforcement, which I think people will actually slow down. If you can get something that's probably more cost-effective and you can put up a zone in which you get traffic tickets over 25 miles per hour, that will slow down traffic. Once that's in order, you can get people going 25 miles per hour, the next thing is the crossing. At 45 miles per hour, you can't slow down for the crossing guard. At 25 miles per hour, you will. The second thing I notice about the crossing is there is no crossing. There's a guy with a sign who holds it up when my wife and kids go by. There's no visible crossing at all. So what happens is he just jumps out of the middle of the street and looks, you know, for people that aren't familiar with that crossing, are kind of startled by it. In some cases, they stop, and in some cases, they don't. If there's a really visible crossing, I think, and speed is mitigated, this problem will be solved. And I think, you know, collectively, it would do a lot for the town where it is a historical district, there's a lot of nice homes, and I worry about a lot of noise and pollution that could affect us. So I'm in favor of alternatives, and I think a better crossing maybe, and more speed regulation will do the trick. And then if that fails, maybe we can take more of a proactive stance in terms of maybe a flashing red light. But I really worry about the effects, the negative effects of a traffic light right in the intersection, especially to the immediate homeowners that are right around it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's everybody, I have my list, but if there are any other folks, yep, we'll definitely be able to accommodate all of you. If you can just come up to the podium, you can sort of form a line here if you like. And again, four minutes, please, to state your name and address.
Seth Leib at 297 Scotland Road. Been a resident for over 10 years. I live there with my wife and my small little daughter, who's about five and a half years old. Not in favor of the traffic light. My wife and I have discussed it at length and looked at it, and really, the issue, like many of the others, it's a speeding issue. It's a speeding issue, and if you reduce the speed, it's my feeling that it'll increase the ability to cross the street. The other thing is that when they redid the curbing along Scotland Road a number of years ago, I think it was maybe about seven or eight years ago, and they paved the street, they did put in a number of curb cuts at other locations, such at Irving and also at Terrell, but they never did put crosswalks. I think if there's more crosswalks, along with other measures, again, signage has been increased. You do have the yellow caution signs, but there are other avenues that can be approached in terms of ways to calm the traffic at Raymond and Scotland Road, such as a blinking light and also lighting in the street and some of the other things that were mentioned. I really feel that the traffic light is the ultimate thing, and it won't, even with the radar signs, won't be enough to calm the traffic. I get up very early, at 6:00 in the morning, and at 8:00 at night when I come home. It's the barreling of the buses. I've called into New Jersey Transit. It falls on deaf ears. I've called at least three or four times. I see the Garda armor trucks barreling through there. I see a US mail truck barreling through there. There's a lot of commercial and other traffic. Obviously, we're not looking to control the traffic. What we're trying to do is reduce the speed of the traffic. There is enforcement that goes on by the police department during the day. They park at around 287 Scotland Road, so they are out there during the day, but a lot of the worst offenders are in other times than during the day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anastasia Tsilikas. I'll spell for you later. 321 Scotland Road. And I just want to point out a couple of things that my neighbors have said. I appreciate their points of view, but there are a couple of things that were said that actually aren't the case. For example, the county has repainted that line quite recently. It has not mitigated the situation whatsoever. I am yet another person who has seen our crossguard nearly hit several times. I have a small child, as my neighbor John Somar pointed out, we have over 30 small children, you know, through school age on Scotland Road. There are also two preschools. And if one of our goals in South Orange is to be a livable, walkable, sustainable old suburb with walkable sidewalks and passable streets, I don't understand how this is even an issue that needs to be discussed any further. At this point, it is absolutely detrimental to our children, detrimental to our pedestrians, detrimental to our commuters. I see commuters every morning when I go to the train at 7:30 or 8:00, jumping past cars to get by. I don't see how this fulfills our goals whatsoever. And particularly when we have two preschools in that straightaway zone, and the children going to Marshall, and the regular foot traffic, the reasons to do it are so much more than the reasons not to do it. And I appreciate the arguments about having law enforcement increase their presence. I think we're all very well aware of the economic challenges that our village, along with all the other communities, are facing right now. And to put extra burdens on them for enforcement is not realistic, and I wish that we did have other options. But at this point, I think it's time for the village to follow the recommendations of the county.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jose Farfani. I'm actually a representative of the South Orange Transportation Committee, and I'm here of the Transportation Advisor Committee, I should say. We received information that this was going to be an issue, and we were asked to look into it. We spoke to a number of residents about it who attended our meetings, and I want to point out that this is a county road. It's not under South Orange's jurisdiction, so we accepted a report that was prepared by the county. I believe all of you are nervous already. So we, in looking at the report, there was a warrant, which means that there was a recommendation that there be a traffic light put there. As part of the committee, being independent of the county and being independent of the Board of Trustees, we looked at it afresh. I should also point out that our committee has two professional traffic engineers, the Chair, Dan Peterson, as well as Paul Eng Wong. So we're coming to it from a perspective of knowing or understanding what these warrants actually mean. And they're good enough to explain to us late people on the committee so we can understand as well. In terms of alternate solutions, we did not accept the traffic signal at its face value. We looked at alternate solutions, including flapper signs in the middle of the street, reducing the width of Scotland Road at that location. Scotland Road, as you know, is a pretty narrow road for a county road. There's not enough width in order to, or it's too narrow in order to create a traffic island in the middle or pedestrian refuge. Bald bouts were also considered, but it was just too narrow to make an effect. The HAWK-type signal, which is a new, it actually is an acronym for High Intensity Activated Crosswalk, and it's actually a traffic signal that's pedestrian-activated. It's not a full signal. This was rejected because of its unfamiliarity or its, people would not be accustomed to seeing such kind of traffic device on Scotland Road. So we came to it basically as the last resort solution, and we did end up supporting putting a traffic signal. I also want to point out, and again, as you know, Complete Streets was adopted by the township, and there are a number of, we strongly advocate pedestrian safety. We'd also point out, as others have, the connection to the South Orange Middle School, the connection to the pool. It's not just during school hours that this crossing is significant, and we think that probably, the traffic light is probably the only solution that's going to work here. This is our understanding. The other thing we would add is your speed is sign, a radar-controlled device. These are found to work. Dan Peterson is also in the process of researching a device that actually links that speeding device or speed register to the traffic signal, so if someone is speeding, the light would turn red. This is something that we would put out there, assuming that the county engineering would support. So I just want to put it out there that we are in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Valerie Jensen. I'm a South Orange resident. I'm here to speak on behalf of many concerned parents of the Barrett Center preschoolers. We're aware that due to reconstruction of Village Hall, many public offices will have to be relocated. However, the relocation of the Parking Authority office, which is directly adjacent to our preschool, is of great concern. It will solicit unnecessary foot traffic to the second floor of the Barrett Center, which is where the preschool is located. Earlier today, I met with Alex Torpey and Barry Lewis, and they are aware of our concerns. We'd like to make sure that the parents after this meeting and that their concerns are going to be addressed and that the safety of our children becomes a top priority. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Solgan. I am also a parent of a child at the Barrett Center, and I also met with Alex Torpey and Barry Lewis earlier today. Just wanted to reiterate that I agree with everything that Ms. Jensen had said. I also did want to bring up one thing, some of the parents are here tonight, but one that couldn't, sent me some information, and I just wanted to read it in and just make sure that when you are evaluating the situation that we've brought forth, that you consider, we found on the New Jersey State website underneath Education, Schools, and Security, Chapter 122 of the Manual of Requirements for Child Care Centers in the State of New Jersey, there's a lot of information here that I'm not sure that frankly, putting the Parking Authority directly adjacent to the preschool, if we are in violation of any of that. So you might want to check that as well.
My name is Michael Jensen, another concerned parent, and it seems to me, from having talked to a number of the parties in this, that this is a decision that was made somewhat on the fly, without thorough investigation of it, without the consent and knowledge of the trustees or even the village administrator. I have taken good words in somebody's mouth, but that does seem to be the case, and I would hate at this point for the village to stand by a decision that's incorrect, has even a violation of a law, when there are so many other places we could put this office, even within the Barrett Center. And I could say that we have the support of the parents of the preschool children, that they'd be more than willing to help move this facility to somewhere else within the Barrett Center. So if it's a question of funding for contractors, anything like that, you know, I don't think that's an issue. Even there's a thick glass that protects the employees from these guests of this parking office, right, that doesn't protect our children, and I'm sure that's a thick glass can be reused somewhere else in the building or in another building. So I do think there's a lot of points that wasn't addressed prior to locating the office here, and I think that should be addressed, and I look forward to hearing something from the village. So far, we've only heard a statement from the Barrett Director, and I think she stands on her own, and I hope she stands on her own on that communication, and that we see something else from the village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ken Weisback, 126 Kenneth Terrace. I don't want to be too long-winded, but yeah, echoing that idea that this, that process seemed to have an underhanded feel to it, and I'm sorry if that seems harsh, but my wife and I were both amazed that we never got any communication about it, and the fact is, nine and a half years ago, we put our first daughter in Christchurch Nursery. There was a buzzer on the door. We at least had that security, you know? And even then, as new parents, we were wary of everything. So now, certain logistics made it so that we, you know, we went for the Barrett, we got to know the place as well as we could, and we felt, you know, reasonably comfortable because where it's located, it's kind of secluded on the second floor, you know? So we felt reasonably comfortable, and still, I think about the fact that it's an open building. So when we made the decision for the Barrett, just understand, you know, the parent makes it, makes the decision with a certain set of circumstances in place, and that was, you know, that circumstance. So now, this set of circumstances is being changed, and without any communication with us, with us, the parents, that just seems appalling and unacceptable. So bottom line, there's got to be a better place to put this office. Like you said, if they're behind protective glass, who knows what could happen? And I'm sure any parent would tell you that the major part of their job as a parent is you can't control everything that happens, but, you know, decrease the risk factor by as much as you can. So that's why, that's why I'm here talking as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Okay, seeing as there is nobody else who wishes to speak, I would like to close public comments. There are a couple of things that I do want to quickly follow up on right now, and a couple of things that are going to require a little more follow-up going forward from tonight. A few real quick ones, there were a couple of issues brought up, specific issues about the Rite Aid and code enforcement. That's something that we can, we're going to follow up on immediately, and we'll ask code enforcement to take a look at that. A quick thing about the speeding on Scotland, the complaints about commercial vehicles, if people routinely notice particular commercial vehicles, buses, garbage trucks, anything like that, and you can get the name of the company, the license plate, the How Is My Driving sticker, or anything like that, definitely forward it to the police department, and you can also come to us as well with that information. And if there are particular companies that are continuing to be aggressive and not follow the traffic laws, I mean, that is something that the village can directly follow up on. On a couple other, another quick point about, someone had mentioned something about a traffic red light camera on that intersection. That is a process that the village has been looking into, looking at red light cameras in general. It's a process that's extremely lengthy and kind of time-consuming to go through, but it is one we are going through. That was to the comments about, mostly about Scotland and South Orange Ave and the drivers there. And that process includes the State Department of Transportation, and there's a couple of layers of accountability to make sure towns aren't just putting in cameras everywhere just to collect the ticket revenue, but that is a process that we're going forward to look at. The concerns regarding the Parking Authority being relocated to the Barrett, as a couple of the residents mentioned, we did meet with them earlier today, had, I think, a pretty good conversation, and we definitely, without a doubt, understand the concerns that were raised. You know, there were, you know, from our standpoint, kind of a couple pros and cons to that office being moved there. One of the things that, there's, I guess, a couple of quick things just for anybody listening that may have not received the communication back from the village that I do want to clear up. And actually, before I say that, we'll say completely that there should have been some communication to the parents of the children that are part of that program. That is something, you know, we strive to notify people before we make a change like that, so we can get this feedback before something happens. You know, we saw the exact kind of same problem created when New Jersey Transit changed train schedules and didn't notify anybody ahead of time, and we see the consequences after that. So that's something that we definitely apologize for and will make sure to do in the future. You know, there's no question that that needs to happen. A very, again, a couple of quick things about that. There are no tickets that are paid, and I know you guys know that because we discussed it earlier. The people don't go to the Parking Authority to pay the tickets, they have to go to the Violations Bureau, the court in Maplewood. So there, you know, some of the emails that... So there, you know, some of the emails that we got, and hopefully everybody that did emails back either was contacted back by Kay Schmidt, our recreation director, or Barry Lewis, our administrator. And so there are, there are no, you know, angry people going in to pay tickets in the Parking Authority that's done somewhere else. And many of the staff that do, that would come in and out of there are current and former police officers who also are Parking Authority officers. And that was something that was kind of considered as part of the pros and cons of, well, yes, there's going to be more foot traffic, but there's also going to be more supervision. Not, I'm certainly not judging which one outweighs which, but it is, you know, a factor to think about. And there's a couple folks that did mention kind of the protective glass, like, well, what does that mean? Clearly, there's kind of a safety risk. That's really just so that the equipment and that is sitting back there, the radios and all the money that is collected, they bring up the coins actually from the meters into the office, and there's a handful of other things. That's really to protect that while still being able to have a transaction window. So it's not like an open window that someone could just kind of jump behind. You know, it's not because there is a, you know, safety risk to the person behind the counter. With all that being said, that does not necessarily mean that the decision is final and has been made. Mr. Lewis, the administrator, and I, you know, again, did meet with some folks who brought this up and absolutely committed to trying to get a better understanding of what other possibilities there are in Barrett of spaces that could be used, if that's something that's possible, get a little more information about, you know, why that room was chosen over other rooms. And obviously, if there's a solution that's better, we're going to do the better solution. You know, there's no doubt about that. And we will make sure, as much as we can, to communicate with you guys. I think we have most people's email addresses who at least emailed us. Feel free to pass along whatever we send to you to anybody else. Direct anybody to us as part of that. Those were a couple of the quick things I wanted to just kind of get out of the way. As far as the concerns brought about the traffic light on Scotland Road, we did have a resolution that was kind of taken out of our consent agenda about this. I would ask the board, and actually, before I do, I'm also going to ask, see if we still have trustee Bauer for a quorum, if we could even vote on this tonight. But is there an intention of trustees to want to vote on this tonight or to discuss it at the conference agenda meeting and have a resolution or proposal following that?
I have a couple of questions about it. And I said before, I was not 100% in favor of the traffic light being purely a traffic light. And I think the, some of the ideas mentioned, like the crossing, visible crossing walk needs to be put in. But I'd also raise the question, and I didn't think I got an answer from Dan Peterson about that that was 100%, he was going to check into it, about having it be a traffic light during the daytime and between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. or 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. be a blinking light, so you didn't have the backup of the traffic at night. And probably also maybe on weekends, have it just be a blinking light, because it didn't seem to be a problem all the time. And I don't know if that could be an option that could be looked at. I also felt that we have to make sure that the, the cycle of the light is timed not to be so long that allows the cars to queue up in just enough time for people to cross. So whether it's 30 seconds, you know, versus some of the, like, I know some of the lights in town are more than 30 seconds, which allows for a longer queue, but this is a fairly short street to cross. So you'd think 30 seconds would be more than adequate. But I'm not an expert on that. And we have a traffic engineer on the committee, so I wanted him, have him check that out. And the, and there's no question we need more enforcement. And, you know, unfortunately, we didn't say anything when New Jersey Transit's here. I have had the discussion with Sally Morris before about the bus drivers from New Jersey Transit, who seem to be the worst offenders of the speeding on Scotland Road, from what I've heard from residents in the past. And we really need to crack down on them. And she said it to me, she told me that if a driver is given a ticket, the driver is responsible to pay that ticket. It's not New Jersey Transit. It's the driver himself is responsible. So I think that we need to speak with the police chief about better enforcement on there and not just on a, not just a one or two-day thing, but it has to be a regular pattern of enforcement on Scotland Road, because it has been a long, ongoing thing. So I would like to put it off the next meeting, see if I can get answers from Dan on these points, and then vote on it, or I guess it's next month. On the other hand, that would be my personal preference.
I mean, we clearly need to come to a resolution of this. You know, we have discussed it quite a bit. I also have a couple of questions. You know, one of the things about this that concerns me a little bit is making sure that we are addressing, not necessarily discreetly, but making sure that we are addressing both of the problems, one which is speeding and one which is pedestrian safety. And they may have different solutions or they may have the same solution. But we need to make sure that it's not just kind of a, that one view of it. And one of the things that worries me a little bit, and I'd like a chance to be able to ask the Transportation Advisor Committee as well, is I worry what it would be like to have a green light on Raymond. Cars coming down Raymond seeing a green light on Scotland, that just to me seems like an absolutely dangerous situation. You know, people coming down even 20 miles an hour, which is below the speed limit on Raymond, that, the grading is, and the drop-off between Raymond to Scotland and then Scotland back to Raymond is so steep. I could imagine, it's almost like those, like, cop movies from the 70s going through, like, San Francisco streets where they're like driving up in the air. Like, I could sort of imagine that happening on there. And the idea of people having a green going across Scotland is a little worrisome. So something I certainly don't know enough about traffic engineering to know is, you know, can you have a light, for example, that is a green, yellow, red light going in two directions and a blinking red in the other direction so that people can stop? And when they then get the green light, it's really just a, it's a stop and then go. So there's never actually a green. I don't know the answer to that, but I'd be curious to hear, you know, kind of what the concerns are about that, you know, how you mitigate that Raymond, you know, speeding issue.
I support a lot of the comments you all have made, but we have had a lot of dialogue and we need to make a decision. So I agree to move this to our next voting meeting with the opportunity to make sure that we answer the questions. But I'm going to support a decision that reduces the opportunity for us to have a young child or an adult injured, you know, or worse. And that is ultimately how I will decide. Because God forbid, if we do nothing and we keep having this discussion over and over again, I almost feel like Sisyphus regarding this issue and we do nothing. But we have to take action, you know, one way or the other. But I think that we have a lot of information. We have a few more questions. We can do a reasoned and informed decision, but we need to take action.
We could pick on the county and say the county.
Well, the county is here.
The county, it's a county road. They really don't need our input. They just want it.
Yeah, that is true. And I don't know if anybody understands this point. The county is probably being gracious to allow, and they always encourage municipalities to have a supporting resolution or the resolution, and they take action. The county, in the best interest that they see of the residents on their road, can go ahead without our approval or disapproval and make that decision. So, you know, I think it's great that we have an opportunity to get everyone's input and different opinions and come up with, you know, base case scenarios, looking at all the potential solutions out there and see which ones would work or make sense. But, you know, I think trustee Rosner made a good point. You should be aware that the county can move forward and make the decision that they think is the appropriate decision. But we'd like to be an active partner in whatever decision that is made, including all the residents and including the South, you know, the trustees, who is the legislative body for the residents here. But they can make a decision without us.
So can I offer us a deadline that we can have one more discussion about this, get these questions that we have answered? Maybe we can get together a document to send over to the, to SOTAC and see if we can get, you know, some more explanation of some of those things. I know you guys have done a lot of work already and maybe some of the questions have already even been answered. And then the following meeting, we have to do some, we have to either do something, whether it's a resolution or anything else. And that's.
And hopefully, we'll have a quorum at the meeting.
Hopefully, we will have a quorum.
Well, I'd like to comment on it as well. I think we have gone through due diligence for extended period of time. I have sat on the, on that corner and watched the crossing guard almost get wiped out a number of times. I think we do have a speeding issue along the street. And I think the Transportation Committee has reviewed it. It may be the best, it may not be the best solution, but it is the only solution that we currently have to solve this problem. I would love to vote on it this evening. My vote would be yes. I think it's long been coming and it's something that we need to do. Janine, are you there?
No, I think she.
We can't vote on it.
Well, that decides that for us.
Some of us are much smarter.
Well, obviously, we have no choice but to wait till the next meeting.
Right. In fact, you know, now at being 11:15, trustee Bauer not being present, we've lost our quorum.
Well, she may be there.
We can't take action.
So we can't take action about it. You have a very brief comment, but just make sure you come up and just please, very brief.
So obviously, and John Somar wins, you and I, Scotland Road, make it official. But some of the things that you had stated, we've got that information. We actually, it's Roselli hauling, it's the U.S. Postal Service, and it's New Jersey Transit buses. Those are the three biggest offenders on the street. It's not just me complaining about it, it's everyone that lives on the street sees it, hears it, hears it at 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning. I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous. So we actually put an email out. I got all the phone numbers and I sent it out to the neighborhood association, said, if you witness it, here's the numbers to call. I'll be more than happy to forward it to you.
Yeah.
The question is, what's going to really happen? I have spoken to New Jersey Transit, and of course, you get the person, you file a complaint. They get, send you an email back saying it'll be taken care of. And then the next week, I see the same bus driver speeding down the street doing 45 because they're making up time between who they picked up in, on Scotland Road in Orange and the straightaway is where they have to dump them off because there's nothing stopping them and there's nobody getting on or off the bus until they have to. That's just one. The postal service is tracetruly, comes through, you know, however he wants. Sometimes he does the speed limit, sometimes he's doing 50. You know, I, I almost got whacked pulling out of my driveway and I've got a pretty clear sail. It's just you just look and you got to say, is that person doing enough time for me to get out or am I going to get whacked? And I've had a couple of close calls and a couple of real close calls where somebody was almost at my back door. I've had people in my front lawn knock down my, the roadside in front of my house and knock my steps out of line. That are going to cost thousands to fix, so he needs a crane to fix steps. These are ancient old, 125-year-old steps. Can't fix them, not going to fix them, not going to spend thousands of dollars to realign the steps. So it stays as it is.
Well, thank you for that. And if you can forward me all that, I would definitely appreciate it. We did get the names of those companies down. And regardless of anything else, there is something very simple, which is that regardless of whether it's a county road or any road, this is in South Orange and our police department does have legal jurisdiction over this roadway. And if there are companies that are continuing to break the law and put our residents at risk, we will take whatever legal action against them we have to, to make sure that they don't do that. Obviously, individual speeders, a little more difficult, and that goes along with the enforcement that we talked about. But there's a lot more accountability when the name of your company's on the side of your truck. So we will absolutely follow up with that. And again, forward me that information and we'll make sure to keep you in the loop as much as we can about that as well. Sure.
SOTAC is meeting next week on Wednesday, so I invite you all to come. If there are open questions, please come to the meeting or, what's that?
What time?
7:30, right in there.
December 6th.
I don't have the date off. First Wednesday of every month. And if you can't make it, please forward your questions in writing.
Okay. Thank you. So seeing as we have lost quorum, we did have a couple of action items to take, which we cannot do, the approval of minutes and such, and a couple of discussion items that trustee Bauer added.
That's it, you're leaving us already?
No, let's stop.
So not only.
We haven't even gotten to part two of the meeting.
Ms. Klein, correct me if I'm wrong, but since we've lost quorum, we can't even move to adjourn the meeting, it's just over. Is that correct?
Yep. I will record in the minutes.
At 11:15?
Yeah, we lost quorum, yeah.
Okay.
That may be.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
The other trustee is there, but she's asleep.